Thank you very much. Okay. Is, uh... Is Mr. Gomes here? No? Okay, we'll do this next time. Are you all here for the, uh...oh, Ram is here, so I'll need that proclamation. Welcome everyone. This is the proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, where it is Hindu Heritage Month and Diwali Day. Where it is said that, Dharma, how we know is Hinduism. The world has been one of the most religious followers of the wine. Approximately 10 million Hindus living in the United States, 20,000 in Broward County, and less than 150 in the rest of the country. Whereas, the Hindus celebrate Hindu festivals throughout the year, many during months of October or November, culminating in celebration of Diwali, which is also a great significance to the Buddhists, Sikhs, Jains alike. Whereas Hindus worldwide reverently observe festival of Diwali, celebrating the victory of good over evil, promoting peace, prosperity with a shared sense of oneness, and bringing a light in the form of knowledge, hope, and university well-being, universal well-being. And whereas the city of Pembroke Pines has benefited from the Hindu, American, and South Asian communities throughout the great family values that they bring along to their commitment to tolerance, pluralism, inclusiveness, and continued excellence in science, medicine, technology, music, dance, yoga, and meditation. Now therefore, I Angelo Castillo, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, and on behalf of the city of commission, uh, commission, to hereby proclaim the month of October as Hindu Heritage Month and November first as Diwali Day in the city of Pembroke Pines and encourage all residents to take time to recognize and celebrate this special month. Ram?
Thank you Mayor, thank you. Thank you very much.
My...
Yes.
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 I wanted to say bye.
Bye.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk, and the dedicated staff of City of Pembroke Pines, Namaste.
Namaste.
I want Ram Tivari is my name. I have been a long time, since nineteen eighty-eight, proud resident of City of Pembroke Pines. Post-retirement from Broward County, I have been volunteering, which I enjoy, and I have served in several boards of the city. And really, I had the opportunity to participate several. And thank you Commissioners for appointing me to those boards and committees. I like the slogan of City of Pembroke Pines, which says, "Join us, progress with us." And I think our Hindu community is doing that. We are joining and progressing with the City of Pembroke Pines. We believe that city's progressive achievements have been made possible by the strong mayor leadership, along with the city commission and support staff. It is our opinion Hindu Americans, the job is well done. Thank you. On behalf of a broader Hindu American community, where proclamation says Hindus, Sikhs, Jains, Buddhists, and others, I thank you for this significant Hindu Heritage Month proclamation. With an attitude of gratitude, I thank you for HSM Proclamations, India's independence you did in the past, and also you did a Diwali resolution in the past. So, thank you. There have been, and we Hindu Americans are very proud and happy that city commission and the mayor have recognized us. As has been said in the proclamation, that Hinduism, Sanatam Dharma, is the third largest religion in the world with more than a billion followers worldwide. And about four million Hindu Americans, about one point two percent of the population, they live in the United States. It is the oldest living Hindu religion, has given birth to multiple other faiths, traditions, and rich culture. And it has been referred those Dharmic faiths, Buddhism, Jainism, Sikhism. Collectively, they are Dharmic faith. They evolved from Sanatam Dharma and Hinduism. I just want to emphasize Mayor and the Commissioner. For us, the family and education is the cornerstone of our Hindu way of life. And because of that, I feel that we have been very successful in the United States, our adopted country. We appreciate that. And also Diwali, as you say, it is, we pass and over first. And it is a significant day because it symbolizes spiritual victory of light over darkness, good over evil, and knowledge over ignorance. So I'm wishing you all, that may Diwali bring joy, love, and happiness to you and to all of us. May we dispel darkness with the light and ignorance with the knowledge, hate over love and together. Because you might have seen there are some Hindu temples are being vandalized in the United States, in Canada. But hopefully, we will win them with our love. So, we are grateful, and again, I will not take long, but I have to say a lot of things. But I can say, just to your basic, three concepts of Hinduism are, we believe there is only one true being, and learned people call it by different names. In Sanskrit, it is said Ekam Sad Vipra Gauda Vadanti. So, this reminds us that there may be many paths which lead to God, but there is only one God and the only God. Vasudhaya Putumbhukam, we believe the entire creation is one family. That human being, plants, animals, another thing, we treat them that they have a life, so we treat them as our family. And that's why if you come to our temple, you will see that when we do prayers, we say Sarve Bhant Sukhina. We pray for everyone, not for only Hindus, for everyone. Loka Sabstha Sukhino Bhanty. May the peace and goodwill prevail in the world. Contributions of Hindus, you might have heard about yoga, meditation, pranayama. They all evolved from Sanatam Dharma, Ayurveda, which is a holistic approach to the health. You might have heard words like Guru, Nirvana, Moksha. These are all again came out of the Sanatam Dharma. We excel in medicine, art, culture, science, engineering, economics, and so on. Hate should not, and will should not be tolerated at any time. I hope all of us shall stand against hate. Freedom of speech does not mean that people are allowed to spread misinformation and hate. Our aim is to create and promote a strong Hindu American identity and dispel misconceptions about Hindus and Hinduism. Also, I found out in the agenda to my Hispanic friends, congratulations to them for Hispanic Heritage Month. May the coming year bring good health, wealth, joy, and success in all our endeavors. As always, thanks and appreciation, Mayor, Commissioners, Manager, Attorney, Clerk. Thank you very much. And I have some small gift for every one of you. I would like to, and you might find something surprising in those bags. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much, thank you. Okay. Uh, Hispanic Heritage Month will be presented next week. Uh, the recipient of the award, uh, of the proclamation this year was not, uh, was not present. You wanna distribute those?
Yeah, I want to give them.
Hey, his bag is bigger.
They have the same size.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you sir.
Go right ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you so very much, thank you all. Okay. The next presentation, I'll ask Mr. Gomes to join me. It is with great pride that I stand before you today to recognize the outstanding achievements by our city's procurement department. Uh, they, which has won the twenty twenty-four Achievement and Excellence in Procurement Award. Is your staff here with you? Please join us. This award is given, is not given lightly. It recognizes organizations that exemplify excellence in procurement practices and demonstrate a commitment to innovation, professionalism, uh, productivity, leadership, and the effective use of technology. Out of countless agencies across the United States and Canada, only seventy-two cities have met the rigorous standards to be honored with this distinction this year. The city of Pembroke Pines procurement department's commitment to continuous improvement and excellence sets a benchmark for our city and showcases the, uh, the dedication to serving our community effectively. Their achievements not only enhance our operational efficiency, but also ensure that we are making the best possible use of our resources for the benefit of our residents. As we move forward, let us continue to support and recognize the incredible work of our procurement department. Together, we can strive for even greater accomplishments in the years to come. And at this time, I would like to present Mark Gomes, who is standing here with me, with his staff member, your name? Byron Brandon, uh, with this beautiful award which they have earned.
Thank you Mayor, thank you City Commission, thank you City Manager and Administration for presenting this award to us tonight. We really appreciate it. It's a lot of hard work and determination that went into this. Um, there's, uh, we've been working on it for a long time now, um, with our past presentations to our city commission with changing our procurement code and various other things like that, um, throughout the years. So once again, I'd like to thank you, and I'd also like to thank, uh, my wife and kids for surprising us tonight, um, with their presence. And I'd like to thank my procurement team, even though they're not all here, uh, for all the hard work and, uh, late nights and, uh, weekends that they spend working on all the accomplishments that we have done. Thank you.
We're gonna do, uh, she couldn't come today, so we'll do the Natalie Belmonte Award for District One next week, okay? Is there anything else Clark, City, Madam Clark? Friends, yesterday marked the tragic one-year anniversary of the October seventh Hamas-led attacks, uh, against Israel, where twelve hundred men, women, and children were killed and more than two hundred fifty others were kidnapped and taken to Gaza, a year since Israel began its war against this militant group. This very solemn anniversary is unspeakably brutal, and it reminds us that the war in Israel and Gaza continues and the suffering rages on. At this time, when Yom Kippur is among, is the most important holiday in the Jewish year, and it, it's, it's upon us, it arrives in just a few days, let us take a moment of silence now in remembrance of all those who were killed and who are suffering from the war, in the hope that peace can be found soon for all of the peoples of the Middle East. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to ask Chief Justino if he would please come forward and give us an update on where we stand with respect to Hurricane Milton.
Okay, good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Dodge, Mr. Goran, Ms. Rogers. Uh, as you know, with the six PM bulletin I just sent you, this thing changes every six hours. Uh, unfortunately, it is back up to a five momentarily, a hundred and sixty-five miles per hour. The good news is if the, uh, dry air and there's a, um, there is a trough that may keep this, uh, the speed decreasing as it goes towards landfall. Landfall is now predicted in the AM hours of Thursday morning. They're predicting it will probably go down to a three, but a very powerful three. We've been very blessed that it's, has missed our area. Uh, doesn't mean we still won't have some potential impacts, and that depends on landfall. And what will happen is the wind field upon landfall will spread out throughout the state. And we do have the potential for some tropical storm winds. They do, the National Weather Service does put it at potential tomorrow, tomorrow evening, going into Thursday and Thursday during the day. When we look at some of the software programs we use, you could see tropical storm impacts uh, in the Pembroke Pines area, but kind of the west area, probably around Thursday at four AM in the morning. But we still have to prepare for all potential impacts that are predicted by the National Weather Service. Now, all our teams, our police, our fire, our public services, communication, everybody, engineering, have been preparing, and, uh, we're well positioned for any impacts that should come our way. We will have rainfall impacts, uh, one to three inches. And, uh, localized flooding at worst could be six inches. But that is far better than what the rest of the state is, uh, gonna go through. Slight risks of tornadoes. Uh, Wednesday, we have a, what they call a slight risk, Thursday, a marginal risk. And let's see. On the winds, from the National Weather Service winds throughout the, uh, event, which is Wednesday, Thursday, twenty-five to thirty-five sustained for the Broward County area, gusts forty to fifty. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Chief, I just wanna thank you for keeping us posted. We have been, uh, sharing the information that you have been, uh, providing to us. And I also know that the, uh, um, the city's social media has been out there informing residents. Obviously, when, whenever there's a storm of any kind, much less a monstrous-looking one like this one, people are concerned, and, uh, as well they should be. And, uh, um, my, uh, my impression has been that people are ascribing seriousness to the matter. They understand, they're well informed, but they're also well-prepared. And they know that these storms can be, uh, unpredictable in terms of their path. And, uh, uh, folks are taking it seriously and they're, uh, they're dealing with it. Uh, I, I feel terribly, uh, at this time for the central part of Florida, which just went through Helene, and here comes Milton. And, uh, um, it's, uh, it's a very, very difficult one-two shot. I just don't know how, but we have been incredibly fortunate so far. And, uh, I thank you and everyone in the city for, uh, for, uh, everything that you do, the preparedness in every single department. Um, should, no matter what it is that comes our way, the city will be there, and we will be ready to, uh, uh, to go and to work with residents and help restore services to our city until the la, the last leaf is picked up. And I, I just, uh, wanna thank you all and the work that you're doing, and I know the strain you're under when, whenever a storm comes by, and, um, thank you very, very much for that. Commissioners?
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Chief, uh, thank you for your continuous updates. This man doesn't sleep. He'll send us an email at two AM. Um, I don't have to set the alarm clock, 'cause I know, uh, Chief Justino is gonna wake me up with that, with the ding on my phone. Um, but in all seriousness, thank you, uh, for doing what you do, coordinating with, uh, Broward County's EOC and, and statewide. Um, certainly, um, we, uh, we are under, uh, tornado, um, uh, possibilities, uh, which could, you know, certainly, uh, certainly, I, I don't wanna see it come true, but it could. Um, I just wanna let you know that, um, uh, the, uh, the pilots at North Perry Airport, at Fort Lauderdale Executive Opalaka, we're standing ready to provide, uh, emergency, immediate emergency relief, um, uh, medicines that people need, the insulin that the folks in North Carolina can't get. We're just too far from North Carolina, otherwise we'd be there, but we've already started to organize, Mayor. Uh, the Teamsters are also standing ready. Uh, they're currently up in North Carolina, uh, but our local rep here in Pembroke Pines, uh, uh, we'll be working together to make sure that central Florida gets their outreach. The other thing that, um, that we have to consider is while this is coming into, um, Sarasota, Tampa area, it's the whole I-4 corridor, so there's places that may not get the attention that they need because they happen to be in Zephyr Hills or Bartow or somewhere in between that, uh, we cannot forget about those folks. So, um, again, as the information comes forward, I'll share it with you so we can disseminate it. Uh, you know, the, as far as drop-offs and what needs to happen, uh, we're, we're, we're staying ready. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, anyone else? Thank you very much Chief.
Yes sir.
Uh, with your indulgence, I would like to bring up our colleague, Mayor Wayne Messon from the city of Miramar. Uh, Mayor, we are, uh, we're grateful and, uh, and honored to have you and your, and your team with us. And I, I know that you have, uh, a request to make of the city, and at this time, I would like to invite you to come to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk. Uh, thank you for the opportunity, um, to address you, um, briefly. Uh, this is my first time in official capacity here in your beautiful, um, city chambers, and I'm joined with our city manager, Dr. Roy Virgin, our Deputy City Manager Kelvin Baker, and our, we call him our go-to guy, anything legislative advocacy, um, our in-team, um, champion in chief to get us access to our partners around the state and the country, Devon Campbell. Um, as you may have received, um, a resolution and letter request from the city, um, of Miramar. Uh, my first want to thank you Mayor and your colleagues on the commission for your unwavering support as we continue to fight the sighting of an incinerator right in our back door and right next door, um, to Pembroke Pines. Um, the city of Miramar, we have gone full court press, um, to stop, um, this incinerate, this incinerator, this proposed incinerator. Beyond its outrageousness and placing it our, our preferred site with Airport West, um, it has taken a significant amount of coordination and resources to put us in the position where we are. Um, we've been, um, very successful as it relates to disrupting the rubber stamp process to, um, pick that site and go through the regulatory process for permitting. On November sixth, the Miami-Dade Board of County Commissioners, um, will make, um, their final, um, decision, or that is what is planned, pertaining to three sites. The Airport West site that threatens all of us, um, the, the Medley site, and the existing, uh, Doral site where the Kavanta incinerator, uh, burnt down. Um, without getting into the numerous of scenarios that may play out, um, at the end of the day, Airport West is still in play. But starting over a year ago, the city of Miramar just by chance found out that Miami-Dade's mayor, Daniella Levine-Cava, uh, made a recommendation to s, uh, cite the, said the, the incinerator at Airport West, basically sweeping it under the rug, hoping that it would go by on the city of Miramar. We found out about it, immediately called the mayor, had a meeting with her, and went to the county commission to, um, voice our objection. Um, with many of our community outreach, where many of you have, uh, stood side by side with us, the city of Miramar put a plan in place to hire an environmental lawyer and environmentalist, as well as other advocates, to help us come up with our plan. We're reaching out to our neighboring cities, um, to solicit, um, financial support as it relates to us and the cost to, um, retain, um, legal services, environmental services. As you can imagine, this is a very technical application process, um, or citing process, um, that will take place. The city of Miramar to date has spent over a half a million dollars as it relates to retaining the best attorneys, retaining the best environmental specialists, um, ensuring that all of the, the significant environmental organizations that are now on our side, um, voicing their opposition. Um, we did this to protect and to preserve what we all have built here in southwest, um, southwest Broward County. Um, we are asking for financial support by cities who would be most impacted as well. Um, and through your generosity, um, it will enable us to get us through the finish line to ensure that that site, um, is not, um, accepted. There are a couple of scenarios that may play out. The best scenario is that the Board of County Commissioners in Miami-Dade County would select an alternative site or delay altogether and look at what we hope would be a more comprehensive zero-waste plan to reimagine solid waste disposal in Miami-Dade County. Or they can choose to pick one of the other two sites. We have to prepare for the worst, um, scenario. We literally have to hit the ground running. If Airport West is selected, Miami-Dade County will then go through their various application process to all of the regulators and all of the permitting agencies that would have jurisdiction to oversee the permitting of the incinerator. The resources and the position the city of Miramar has done is put a, uh, uh, basically a data bank. At every application process, um, there will be an opportunity for the public to comment, for us to, um, intercede and demonstrate how we will be impacted. Obviously, Miami-Dade County will present its case in its most favorable scenario to ensure the construction, um, of that site. So, um, without, um, eh, uh, without going into any further details, um, I'll take any questions that you may have. Our request is, um, is for a hundred thousand. I'm from the city of Pembroke Pines. Uh, we also have, um, similar requests to, um, Southwest Ranches, Cooper City, um, and Weston. Um, all cities that would, um, be negatively and adversely, um, impacted with this incinerator so close, um, to, to our homes. So, uh, we hope that it will be the will of this body, um, to, um, join us financially. We know you're there in spirit. We know you've been there physically. You've been to Miami-Dade County Commission meetings, voicing your opposition as well. Uh, but in all candor, where the rubber hits the road, um, for us to be able to sit down with each individual commissioner outside of the, the, the theatrics of a commission chambers, to be able to give them real, objective data. That data just does not fall out of the sky like, man, we have to put that together. We have to get, um, experts to bring this data to them. We have to get experts to bring this data to them so that it can give them balance as they make their decisions. So at this time, if there are any questions, I'll take them.
Mayor, I just want to thank you for the leadership that you've provided on this issue. It's been an incredible thing to see. It's not just the calling of a couple of meetings or going to see other people behind the scenes. You have been devoted to this, and you have been talking to our counterparts in Miami-Dade County, not just the county elected officials, but also the city officials. It's a very thorough and a very genuine effort that you and your entire city have put forward. We join you in this effort. The incinerator site at Airport West is an existential threat to the city of Miramar as well as it is to all of the cities of southwest Broward. It is an unwelcome intrusion, not just potentially on our health, but also on the environmental aspects of our water, our land, our air. And it places a, beyond that, it places a tremendous economic strain on Miami-Dade County. It will take years and years and years for them to get a permit that would allow them to build such a thing in that place. But beyond that, the, no one seems to be talking about this, but the operational nightmare of having to bring trucks with trash from as far as Homestead all the way up to US-27 at the county line to dump what they have and then go back to their route, it will cost residents in Miami-Dade many, many millions of dollars simply because that facility is financially in the wrong place. Set aside all of the issues with the environment, if you can, which are very troubling. Set aside what it does to their neighbor Broward County. It's not a workable plan. And I have to tell you that I'm very, very supportive of your request because I know that if we were faced with this, you would be there with us. Your city would be there with us because any threat to Pembroke Pines is likewise a threat to Miramar. I've had the pleasure of joining you twice at the Miami-Dade County Commission to testify against this proposal. It was my pleasure to be there. I was joined there by many people, not just from Miramar, but many from Pembroke Pines and southwest ranches as well, who trekked down there early on Tuesday mornings to make sure that their voices were heard, that this is not something that we want to see them do. And indeed, they have the options. The Medley site was something that came up very, very last minute. It involved a land swap that no one even anticipated. Many of the, as we heard it being said, many of the county commissioners there had not even heard of this. It was sort of sprung last minute on their county commission. And I think they did the wise thing by letting it, by deferring it and letting it play out over a little bit of time so that they can take a look at that. But I think ultimately the votes are there to, if they're going to do incineration at all, to probably put it back in Doral because that's the easiest and smartest operationally and least objectionable option that's available to them. This is a highly complicated matter. You and I have both indicated that it's best handled on a regional basis, that Miami-Dade County, Palm Beach County, Broward County should all sit down at the table and figure out a way, a smart way, to recycle 90% of our waste. And if we did that, we'd probably find that we have, far from needing another incinerator, we have more incineration capacity than we require on any regional basis. Those meetings have not been called, and that's a disappointment. However, as you know, I know that you're a member of the Broward County Solid Waste Authority and that we have chosen not to join yet until they produce a plan. But we're rooting for them to produce a plan because someone's got to solve this problem. It's a complicated problem. But if it involves incineration, I dare say that this commission's going to say, hell no, we don't want to be part of that. And not just because that's some newfound policy. The city of Pembroke Pines for 30 years has opposed this incineration. Ask City Manager Dodge. It's the reason we didn't join the county program 30 years ago. It's because they were promoting multiple incinerators in Broward County. We actually found a way to deal with, at least in those days, to deal with our trashload without having to incinerate. So I am supportive of your request. And in my discussions with staff, both City Manager and City Attorney agreed that this should be an up to $100,000 authorization and that all of the bills and the expenditures should go through the City Attorney, that he would collect the billings for this and authorize the dispersments of it if the city commission so authorizes. And I'm very, very supportive of your request. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Mayor Messam, if it was anybody else other than you, I would have probably a lot of extra thought into the request that's being made. You know, I've known you to be a participant in this arena ever since the sunsetting of the Broward County Resource Recovery System. And what many people may not be aware of is that you were a member of an Elite Five Mayor Group that sort of helped salvage a lot of that dissolution process and put Broward County on a path forward to at least find solutions. So it wasn't just flat-out dead and we were just hopeless. Your knowledge since then to today is incredibly strong, thoughtful, and very, very needed. So hearing what you are presenting to us, you know, on behalf of the city of Miramar, you know, I see this as us sort of buying into the learning curve because, you know, Pembroke Pines, as we know, is sort of under the same kind of threat. I mean, we don't want it that close to us in Dade County, and we don't want it that close to us in Broward County either. And so a lot of what you and the city of Miramar are going through is a great learning lesson for all of us. So if we are participating in that, that knowledge base seems to be a natural transfer to this city such that if there is that need to execute on that knowledge, then, you know, we are certainly, that's money to me well-spent because it would cost us more than $100,000 just to get to the level of where you are and your city is at today. So for me, recognizing who is in the front leading this fight and the fact that we are sharing very, very valuable information, and we all have the common interest to steer clear of archaic type of solutions, and we want to go into a more progressive way, I'm certainly behind you and the city of Miramar in this effort. So, Mr. Mayor, I certainly, you have my vote in this matter, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez?
I just wanted to say thank you for the leadership that you guys and everybody in the city of Miramar know has done a lot to make sure that we're advocating against that. So I'm happy to join you, you know, in this effort. One of the things that I did kind of want to point out is, one of the reasons that I'm supportive of this is if we are able to stop something so far west, close to the Everglades, on US-27 down below Miami, although there are no current plans for the Solid Waste Authority to build anything within our, you know, within the entirety of Broward, no incineration, no plans for now, I don't want them to think that, oh, they did something in Miami, can we do something similar here? So in the effort of stopping something in Miami, we stopped the idea of something like that in Broward. So that's one of the reasons that I really want to make sure that we're in with you on the fight to do this. And I haven't been able to go to the county commission meetings, but I went to one of the town halls. And to me, it's a bit striking to see Arcadis, the firm that helps kind of develop these plans, be onstage with them. And I think making sure that we are highlighting that in a sense is also important because they stand to make money from this conversation, they stand to make money from these projects. And so making sure that we are mentioning to the public and to the news outlets and things like that, that one of the person trying to convince you is a person who will make money off of that. So those are my two points. And again, thank you for your leadership and for your staff's leadership as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Hernandez?
I'll be supportive along with my colleagues at the appropriate time. I did want to thank you, Mayor, for taking, I'm sorry, you're this mayor.
Yes.
You as well, Mayor Castillo, but Mayor Messam. I've lived in Pembroke Pines my entire, most of my entire adult life, and I was the Communications Director for the former Miami-Dade County Mayor. I oversaw all the communications, including for solid waste, which includes the facility in Doral. I think something that you said at one of your appearances is important to reiterate. That facility predates the city of Doral. It was planned in the 1970s before I was born. It was constructed and completed in 1982. 21 years later is when the city of Doral decided they wanted to incorporate around an incinerator. Truthfully, I don't believe the Miami-Dade County Mayor believes she has the votes for the Airport West site, but like you said, we have to be ready. We have to be prepared. I think Chairman Oliver Gilbert was very clear in his comments at the end of the last commission meeting, saying, I have seven votes to put this right back in Doral, but we'll punt for now. But I do think that we have to be prepared, and that's why I will be supportive. I thank you and your entire team that's down there in Miami. This does affect all of us. I did want to make one point. I can't remember which county commissioner in Miami-Dade, and it may not have been, it may have been a representative of the Doral legal team who said this, and I'm personal friends with the Doral mayor, this is not a shot at her or her team, but he kept talking about who their constituents are. And I mentioned this on radio about two weeks ago. The geopolitical line that divides our counties doesn't divide constituents. Like I said, I was the highest-ranking communications officer in that government for five years. I lived in Pembroke Pines. I can assure you, there are thousands of Miami-Dade County employees and municipal employees who live in your city, who live in our city. When I was there, the fire chief of Miami-Dade Fire Rescue lived in Pembroke Pines, his assistant chief lived in Pembroke Pines, senior leadership from the mayor's team, the former deputy mayors, I'm sure you know Russell Benford, they all lived in Broward County. So I would say in your, when you are speaking to them, just remind them, just because it's Broward County doesn't mean these folks don't work in your community, work in other municipalities. There are senior leaders right now under this current Miami-Dade County administration who live in your city too. Okay? So thank you, and you have my support.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Mayor Messam, it's good to see you in Pembroke Pines. I appreciate the advocacy that you've been doing on behalf of the city of Miramar. My residents have a slightly different perspective. They don't like to hear words like theatrics, sweeping under the rug, and sprung on. That's not the accountability that they expect out of the leadership that they asked me to be in this seat. On the 29th of August, I texted you prior to making a post on the city of Miramar's Facebook page with the town of Medley, the mayor, and his phone number. I don't usually post on other cities' social media because I just feel that that's just in bad taste, but considering that there was a concern about the incinerator, I wanted to make sure that the residents of Miramar had the same information that I provided this commission nine days prior. On the 21st of August, we had a meeting, and I shared with my colleagues that I had a conversation with the mayor of Medley, who said that he wants the incinerator in his town. And I asked that that information be communicated to your city administration. I watched with great intent the hundreds of speakers and the hours of public comment only to have the same information that I had brought two months prior was the landowner in Medley who wanted to do a land swap. The same information I tried to communicate back in August. Now, back in April, we had a resolution that we sent to the city of Miramar to oppose the landfill incinerator expansion of any kind right here. And we were promised, not once but twice, that it was going to be on the agenda in Miramar, and it wasn't. And it finally passed, I think you passed it back in, if I'm not mistaken, either late June or early August, which I appreciate. Because the authority that we voted against, they wanted $200,000 from this dais to sit at a table with the hope that they would go along with our view. We said no, and we wished them well with the plan as the mayor articulated. Now what's being proposed is a request to either use half that money at $100,000 or all of it for, quite frankly, I watched the deliberations. I believe they were ready to make that vote a few weeks ago, but Commissioner Gilbert said, well, we'll just have it after the November 5th election, and they gave him two dates. He did say that he felt there were seven votes to keep it in Doral. But what wasn't mentioned yet was what Commissioner Hardeman said. Commissioner Hardeman advocated and thanked the city of Miramar for being there. He also said that if the city of Doral wants to pay a little bit more money, maybe it won't go in Doral. And he also alluded that maybe if the city of Miramar pays a little bit of money, it won't go to Airport West. Now that, that was something to hear. It was disgusting. So Mayor, the mayor of Miami-Dade County has executive authority, but needs to get the majority commission of the county commissioners in order to see things through. Right now, they're trucking all their trash up to Broward into the incinerator, and the leftover goes up to Okeechobee. And they're putting it on railcar right now. The mayor of Medley says that he welcomes, he welcomes the ability to bring, for logistical and transportation and financial costs, bring it to Medley, that his residents support it. I don't know any Pembroke Pines resident that supports putting an incinerator next door to Miramar. I haven't found one that says, yes, that sounds like a great place. Because there's certainly a better opportunity of use at Opalaka West is how I know it. We'll just call Airport West for this conversation. I believe there's politics happening down in Dade County. It's funny how they wanted to wait until after the November 5th election. It was interesting to see the dynamic of who's on the ballot in November, and their position, and those who weren't. I noticed a lot of green shirts. Were they volunteers or were they paid? Were they paid to be there or were they volunteers to be there? The half million dollars that have been spent by Miramar, has there been a detailed breakdown? I asked the city manager to reach out to your city manager for an absolute breakdown before tonight's meeting. I didn't get it. Now maybe we can get that before we jump the gun and pledge dollars for something that, quite frankly, we're going to know more about on November 6th. we're going to know more about on November sixth. So, I'm in support of the actions being taken by the city of Miramar on behalf of Southwest Broward. I just think it's premature to ask for dollars of the residents. Right now, we just had a discussion just, uh, just a few short weeks ago of whether or not we can afford to keep cops in schools. Pembroke Pines has to pay its bills. We are, we, we have, we have this building to pay for, you know, that comes at a cost. I don't know what your financials are at the, um, Out West, you know, for your entertainment complex. If that's in the black or the red.
Let's, uh, let's stay to the, uh,
But I'm trying, when my residents ask me, when my residents ask me to support dollars going to, to another municipality, these are the questions they ask, right? It's a, it's a fair question, Mayor. You, you would, you wouldn't understand. If we came to you, you'd be asking those same questions. So what, what I appreciate.
I, I, I would not, but go ahead.
What I, what I, what I appreciate is the collaborative effort that we stand together. You have my commitment to fight this thing. I've been, I've been speaking with folks who have been in, who have direct communication with the mayor of Miami Dade County for close to a year. It wasn't swept under the rug. This has been going on for a period of time, ever since the fire in Doral. It's been, um, it's been a, a, a Miami Dade County issue, a blister that was going to pop. They weren't expecting the fire, so now they have to actually do something about garbage. We, in Broward County, are going about it the, the wrong way. Regionalization is the way to go. Why are we going to have a billion dollars in Dade, a billion in Broward, and a billion in Palm Beach? Makes no sense. And we've all said this thing publicly. So, tonight, I stand with you. But I can't do it financially. Now, if there was a caveat, let's see what happens on November sixth and revisit the issue. I wouldn't have an issue with that. But to stroke a check right now for a hundred grand?
No one, no one is asking for that. The, the, the request is to authorize administration, uh, up to a hundred thousand dollars and to entrust the dispersment of that relative to, uh, billings that would come from the city of Miramar eligible in line with the request to our city attorney. No one is writing a check for a hundred thousand dollars.
All right, well, an authorization to have dispersment is what's being requested. And I can't do that until I have more certainty on November sixth, which way this thing is going to go.
Okay.
So if, if my colleagues would be, would just give us, what, three weeks? Three weeks and we're there, we know certainty before that authorization goes through, you wouldn't have an issue with that, would you, Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I respond?
Please.
Okay. All right. There is a lot, um, that, that was stated. First, um, Commissioner Schwartz, I definitely appreciate your support in fighting the incinerator. I would like to provide, um, more clarity and some responses to, um, some of the, um, points that you raised. First, as it relates to was not swept under the rug. On September twenty-twenty-three, I think it was September seventh agenda, the first meeting of the month in September in twenty-twenty-three, there had not been any public notice prior to the agenda being released that Airport West would be recommended as the preferred site. So when I said swept under the rug, Miramar was not contacted, city of Pembroke Pines was not contacted, that a four-hundred acre site with less than an eighth of a mile from Miramar would be the preferred site for the incinerator. So when I say it was, they thought it would be able to sweep it under the rug, make the preferred recommendation, select the site and apply for permits, that is what I mean. We were not included. That's why we were outraged that they would put the nation's largest incineration, incinerator, four thousand tons a day, literally on our border without even talking to us. That was the first assault. Second, the resources that we have spent. If the city of Miramar would have waited for the authority and the authorization from Pembroke Pines, Cooper City, Weston, Southwest Ranches, to put money in the pot along with Miramar, to get the legal defense, the environmental consultation, all of the information that we needed to make the case why Airport West does not make sense. November sixth wouldn't even be in play because right now, the EPA, the state of Florida, South, uh, Florida Water Management District, Miami Dade County themselves right now would have an application to build an incinerator at Airport West. We could not wait. The city of Miramar took the initiative to say, although this has not been budgeted, we allocated three hundred thousand dollars. We have spent an extra two hundred thousand dollars because of additional resources that were needed. We could not wait for a collective agreement of bodies of governance to foot the bill on something that we stated that we have to protect our own. So now, the city of Miramar is basically saying that we have been good stewards of taxpayer dollars to protect our interests, not just the city of Miramar, but of Pembroke Pines, Cooper City, all of our Southwest Broward neighbors and friends. So this is just a simple request to say that we went forward and fronted the bill. You're not obligated. You can say thanks, but no thanks, all right? And we all still benefit. We're just reaching out as neighbors to say that we're almost at the finish line. Had we not done what we did, there wouldn't be a November sixth. We'll be now trying to raise millions to litigate this thing. We're not asking you for money to pay for lawyers to litigate a lawsuit that might happen. We're talking about the collective data that have been compiled, put together, and for us to make the case to the elected officials. The second point I want to address, it had been widely known that the city of Medley wanted. It had been on Channel Four.
That's right.
Many publications. That was not the argument. Also, the mayor and the commissioners knew about the done property because the first proposal was to sell it for two hundred thousand. It was a part of their original package. That said, the cost to build that Medley included the acquisition cost of two hundred million dollars.
Right.
So, to state what was already known as a priority was not necessary. Plus, Medley had no decision in the process. It's the Board of County Commissioners of Miami Dade County that makes the decision. So based on those factors is why we did what we did in the manner which we did it. So I hope my response provides additional clarity. I would hope that you would join your colleagues in the support of this. The city of Miramar has been transparent in everything, all right? All of the data that we've compiled is available. As you know, as a public entity, this is public information. All of the bills that we pay to our consultants and legal counsel is available. There's nothing for us to hide. So I would hope that we could have unanimous support, um, on this item. I think what has been proposed as it relates to granting, um, the support to the city of Miramar is transparent. Whatever requests would come from the city manager, the city attorneys and yourselves, our staff will, um, will, will, will graciously, uh, provide that information. But I would hope that the support from this body would not be contingent upon a decision that we don't control that might happen on November sixth when the work has been done. The work has been, um, put forward in a manner that I think that, um, we all can be proud of. We're not spiking the ball yet because the game isn't over. And the great thing about this is that the city of Miramar didn't do this alone. Pembroke Pines has been with us from day one. Cooper City has been with us from day one. Weston has been there from day one. Southwest Ranches has been there from day one. We have all fought this together as a community.
Uh, Mayor Castillo, if I, if I may, uh, Mayor Messam. The letter, um, that, that, that's in the backup that residents have been responding to me about. Paragraph one, two, three, four says, "I write to you to request that you and your colleagues of the city commission contribute a hundred thousand dollars towards the expected ongoing costs."
Because they're more.
Which, which is different from the justification of the hundred thousand dollars made from this podium this evening to reimburse Miramar for the environmental studies and the, and the, um, uh, and the, and the, and the push-in to, to stop Airport West. What you said tonight is different from what is being presented on, in, in the, in the letter that the residents are responding to, when it says ongoing costs. So when I asked the city manager for a breakdown, my city manager for a breakdown of the cost that, that the city of Miramar has incurred, I believe that this body has a right to review those costs or the city attorney to review those costs before authorization is issued. So it's, it's, it's a two-step front.
Mr. Mayor, um, if I may. I raised the issue about Miramar being good stewards and going ahead and fronting costs that we needed immediately, that we needed immediately. I did not state that from the standpoint of that is what is in the letter. We're currently right now incurring costs. We're currently right now continuing to meet. We're currently right now authorizing additional data. What isn't known is that we also have a state strategy. The governor has a big priority on Everglades restoration. Their office is oblivious to the threat to the hundreds of millions of dollars that this state has contributed. We've already begun that process. That's in motion. There are other costs that are ongoing. So the letter states ongoing just to be certain, to let you know that victory is not won. And I would hope that the support in principle and in spirit for the hundred thousand request isn't handcuffed to minutia as it relates to October eighth moving forward. Because there's ongoing costs, there's expenditures that have already been made, and we're just simply asking for financial support.
Thank you, Mayor. I, uh, I, I, I think that, that, that in order to continue this, we have to have a motion. And if I was to suggest one, it would be to authorize up to a hundred thousand dollars, to fight the incinerator with respect to the, uh, the costs that would be reviewed. Uh, there would be actual billings of it that would be reviewed and entrusted to, uh, uh, to the city attorney. And, uh, that, uh, that by, uh, by promoting that, uh, motion, uh, we would demonstrate not just to our neighbors and not just to our neighboring cities, but also to the, uh, uh, the county of Miami Dade that, uh, beyond just rhetoric, we are a full partner in, uh, in, in this effort. It's not just words. Uh, uh, we're taking this seriously. This is a threat to us as well. And if someone will make that motion and second it, we can continue the, uh,
That's a long motion. How did, I mean, I, I would have moved that, but how I, how we worded it is a little challenging.
Okay, so, so, so this is, this would be a motion to, uh, uh, to approve the request from the city of Miramar for a not to exceed one hundred thousand dollar amount to, uh, assist in the fight against the incinerator, uh, proposed by Miami Dade County and to, um, authorize the, uh, city attorney to, uh, to review the billings and to authorize those expenditures.
I make that motion.
Okay. So motion's been made. Is there a second? Second, a motion is made by Commissioner Rodriguez and seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Is there a discussion? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just, I just want to say a lot of great dialogue here. And I, I know that, uh, some of us have been, um, you know, we're pretty well versed in how things happen amongst municipalities, county and maybe other agencies as well. And what sometimes seems to be, uh, the direction things are going, when that boat comes, sometimes that is a heart and eighty degree in the direction that we thought it was going to be in. And I think it's very important to be prepared and to be tooled up that in the event that anything like that happens, that, um, that there is the ability to make an immediate movement as opposed to
Right.
waiting for the coalition to come together and, and, and try to create. I, I think this is brilliant to, to, to build a coalition in advance of, of anything that happens. But if it doesn't happen, then there's no expenditures and there's no harm done. So for me, it's, uh, it's important. You know, and, and Mayor Messam, you, you, you mentioned something else too that is, uh, that is exceptionally valuable, uh, in this decision. In that you mentioned that the state is not even aware of what impact could be on a vested interest that they have spent hundreds of, maybe more millions of dollars. For this to be risen to that level, the, the, the leverage that it gives the city of Pembroke Pines for anything that may happen in Broward County that impacts Pembroke Pines is incredibly valuable. Worth more than what we are, uh, discussing tonight because that may make a whole lot of things mute and may protect us substantially. So I, uh, again, am, uh, one hundred percent in on this. I, I think it's a very important fight that you take on. I think you need to be tooled up in advance and, and us being there, uh, as, as that fight continues, I think is extremely important. Thank you.
Any additional comment? Commissioner Schwartz?
Vice Mayor, good. Uh, I just need you to clarify. The, the hundred thousand dollar request is to
Up to.
Up to, that I see here and it's been stated tonight, is the backfill monies that have already gone out?
No, sir.
Are you, uh, is it, is it your position that the hundred thousand dollars only goes forward if this site is selected?
I believe that's what I'm hearing tonight. Is that not what I'm hearing tonight?
From you, sir. I, I need to hear what, what your viewpoint is because it's not in the motion. It, the, the motion that's currently on the table is to provide Miramar with a hundred thousand dollars of financial support. They've already expended money. Mayor Messam has already said that they fronted the money in the hopes that collegially, that cities would, would assist Miramar in, in expenses that they've already laid out.
Well, let's ask the mayor. Is, is, is it your plan to use these funds prospectively?
Mr. Mayor, let, let me, let me be clear. It's one thing to ask for money for something to be done. Miramar has demonstrated that not only did we put money forward, we spent an additional two hundred thousand to protect our city and to protect our neighbors. There are continuing efforts because this fight is not over. So waiting to November sixth, as what was stated in your comments, I said that it, 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 it puts the effort at a disadvantage. the effort at a disadvantage. Knowing that we have resources and commitments from the city of Miramar and other cities that may support us in kind would allow us to continue our efforts on ongoing strategy, ongoing environmental data collection, ongoing meetings and strategies. Because this is a public meeting, I can't go into specific details in terms of what is being done to protect our interests, almost similar to the executive session that you have. If I state everything that we're doing in a public setting, it then now tips off Miami-Dade County to counter those efforts. But all of those efforts cost money. So, to be clear, that if this body is stating that for ongoing expenses, trust me, there are ongoing expenses that we will be able to send forward in regards to where these dollars can be in support of. I simply stated that we spent $500,000 because we did not dissent the urgency of now to fight this. We could not wait to get approval. I mean, we actually sent the request months before to all the cities. To all the cities. We sent the resolution.
I think his question was, the actual expenditures would be prospective from this date, prospective from this date forward.
If that is the requirement of this body, yes. The letter says for "ongoing expenses," which basically means there's continuing efforts that are going on and we're requesting $100,000.
Okay, so Commissioner Rodriguez, would you include prospective from this date forward in your motion?
Yes, I amend the motion to say prospective and ongoing.
Commissioner Hernandez, would you include that in your second?
Yes.
All right, without objection, we'll include that provision that it will be prospective from this date forward. Any billings associated with this matter would be prospective. Is there any other comment?
No, it's more of a comment. This is what I needed to hear from my colleagues, Mayor Messam. We are... We have a threat two miles up the road, and the county owns that thing already. Okay, so we have to collect our financial resources to fight that thing too. And what we have are competing issues. Now, I will tell you this, when the wind blows, we all breathe it. So, we can't have incineration. We cannot future incineration in this county, either here or in Miami-Dade. The testimony that was the amount of cancer and other health-related issues that were discussed in Miami-Dade County at that meeting was profound. I will also tell you this, that there's efforts at the state level to prohibit incineration near populous areas statewide. There's an effort there too, which means that our pockets for our lobbyists up in Tallahassee also need to be filled in order to get that done as well. So, I join my colleagues on the perspective aspect of it because we have more work to do financially, collegially, legislatively, and the advocacy arm. So, you have my support for that. Mayor, if you can call the vote.
Is there any further comment on this question? We're clear on the motion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Attorney, you're clear?
I am.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes, and by your vote, this request is approved. And Mayor, I want to thank you again for your testimony. I want to thank all of you for joining your mayor and for everything that you do. And we're in this fight together now in every way. And I wish you luck. And if you need our support in the other cities that you're visiting, please count on us to be there. We are joined at the hip with you. And we know that if we needed you and your city to do that for us, you'd be there for us as well. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes. I have a request to bring item 13 up out of order. If we could do that, Ms. City... Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Item 13 is Commissioner Rodriguez's commission item. Commissioner, if you would read the item into the record.
Thank you. Just because we have a couple residents here that have been waiting for a bit, so I appreciate the patience. So, motion, discussion and possible action on the traffic calming measures on Southwest 54th Place with the possibility of directing city staff to perform a survey of the residents on 54th Place and their surrounding neighborhood regarding the impact of recently installed traffic calming measures, including speed humps. So, just to kind of, obviously, we were all here and made a motion upon an original petition that I included here in the backup as well as the summary explanation. But just to jog everybody's memory, we had this original application brought forth by one of our residents. I believe it was my first or second meeting, something like that. So, you know, I took it face value, understood the concerns of speeding on the road, the increased traffic on the road, and we evaluated that. I know there was a concern from our fire department regarding the increased time that our emergency vehicles might take because of the speed humps. So, that was mentioned to the residents who were here in person. It didn't seem like they had much of an issue with it, so we continued to do the speed, to install the speed humps. As mentioned, so the equipment was received on July 28th. We did install not provisional but easy-to-take-off kind of speed humps.
Temporary.
Temporary, in the case that we needed to reevaluate or any case that we're paving the roads, they're just easier to take off and maneuver. And then there... So, that was completed on August 12th. Later on, on the 27th, we actually received a secondary petition with the same number of signatures as the first one, but now saying that they wanted to remove the speed hump. So, I wanted to bring it to the commission because, you know, seeing... For one, I need all of your votes to kind of move forward on this topic. And I ended up hearing more and more from the residents sign during home visits, HOA meetings, things of that sort, where people were now concerned with the speed humps, including that additional time for our fire department to get or any emergency vehicle to get through the streets. So, my suggestion is I have, you know, full faith in our residents that they did their due diligence to double-check the signature stuff like that. However, I would feel the most comfortable if city staff went out and did a survey of all of the homes impacted by this speed hump. And then although it's not needed for us to make that decision for there to be a majority of that, I would like a better understanding either, you know, through the city or in combination with the HOA to understand the impact that other residents might have and their perspective on it. Because although it is in the ordinance, we can... We should or may only consider that one street because that's where the houses are, that street is one of the main streets to the other parts of the neighborhood. So, that's kind of, you know, the discussion that I wanted to bring forth and in some way, like asking for ideas and for the acceptance of this survey in defining whether we're going to do the survey just on that street to kind of get a concrete answer from our end. Because as we know, in a lot of these topics, some residents reach out, others also reach out and have different opinions. So, I kind of want to get to a data-based answer on this.
Okay, before we make that motion, let me ask the city manager. The city manager, the commissioner is asking for you through staff to do an actual door-to-door survey of what residents want with respect to speed humps in the community, correct?
Yes.
Are you capable of directing that and getting it done?
Yes, Mayor, we are. But I want to make certain that it's understood that we're going to follow the requirements of the ordinance so that if we're talking 54th Place, the ordinance talks about residents who reside on that street.
Right.
Not residents who could traverse that road. Because when we've installed speed humps on other streets, it's only been the people who live on that street that had an opportunity to vote. And I had heard that some had said that people had not signed them, some changed their minds. So, I think to be objective about it, we would have someone go and speak to everyone on that roadway.
So, under the way that we do this, when you want a speed humps, the people that control the decision are the people that live on the block where the speed humps would be. Even though others might traverse through that road, this is about providing a relief to the homeowner who... Whose children might be threatened and so forth, that another community might... Or another block might want speed humps that would be for them to pursue. So, your motion to be in order would have to be for that particular block. So, the block you're talking about is 54th Place?
54th. So, I will personally commit. I know the city would only do the ordinance either by myself or alongside the HOA and the community. Make sure that we are at least getting some kind of feedback from the entirety of the community. That's not what I'm asking for because I understand that I wouldn't be able to.
Right.
But if what I'm only able to is for Southwest 54th Place, that's the question that I'm asking.
And is that your motion now?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, that... Hold on, hold on. Everybody's going to be called. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, so there's a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion before we go to the public?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez, for bringing this forward. I have on my screen the April 3rd motion in the backup for April 3rd. And I also have on the screen the backup for tonight's item. And I just have some administration questions about that. There, in the backup tonight, under number two in the backup, city administration was directed to place the item on the agenda as a commissioner item on April 3rd where it was voted upon. The item was placed by Mayor Castillo. And in that backup of number two, it said that the speed humps are to be placed only in straight sections. I'm not reading the entire thing here, but essentially, I'm requesting that the 1,000-foot length without other traffic calming devices, 500 foot between humps and 250 foot from intersection rules and associated studies be waived in order to expedite installation of these resident-requested speed humps. City engineer has primarily cited the speed humps. Now, at that meeting, the item passed. At the following meeting, I had a commission item that I brought forward because I had learned...
Commissioner, I'm giving you as much leeway as I can, but that's not the motion that's in front of us.
Well, it has to do with the clarification.
Excuse me. That's not the motion that's in front of us. The motion that's in front of us is Commissioner Rodriguez... This isn't a history... The motion in front of us is simply a request to ask the city manager to do a survey of 54th Place. That's the motion that's in front of us.
The petition...
Hold on, I'll get to you all. So, my goal is to just get questions or comments with respect to the... Hold on a second. My goal is to just get questions or comments with respect to the commissioner's motion. Then we're going to go to the public. And then if someone wants to make an amendment, they can make an amendment. And then discussion of the pass will be in order. I simply want to make sure at this first cut that everyone understands commissioner's motion. Do you have any other questions regarding commissioner's motion?
I do because...
Right ahead.
We received, forgive me, Commissioner Rodriguez, in the backup, the letter requesting the removal of the speed humps is in the item that was submitted by Mr. Wilder.
That's not the commissioner's motion right now.
But that's what's in the backup to the item, so...
I understand it, but please cooperate with the chair. What I'm trying to do, this is just the first cut. We're going to get more opportunities to speak. The first cut is to clarify, make sure that you all understand the commissioner's motion. Then we're going to go to the public and then we can have discussion about any other items, amendments that you want to make to the motion, all that. Right now, we're on the commissioner's motion.
So, the motion made by Commissioner Rodriguez is to send staff out to verify that Mr. Wilder's... I don't want to personalize it.
What she said was it would be a de novo survey of residents on 54th Place.
Based upon the signatures that were collected in the backup?
Not at all. My understanding is we would start over, go to each house on 54th and ask that question.
Ask what question, city manager? Ask what question, whether or not they actually signed it?
No, whether or not they want speed humps.
It doesn't matter whether they signed it before and then they changed their mind. The question is, we're asking now for each resident that resides on 54th Place, do you want the speed hump?
Listen to the answer to the question.
Okay, I hear what you're saying. The conclusion's going to be if the District 3 Commissioner wants to send staff out to verify that the residents don't want it, I perfectly support that because they don't want it. That's what's going to come back, is that they want the humps removed.
Sir, sir...
So, on...
We're not asking you to guess what the answer's going to be. We're simply asking you at this point, and I'm going to ask you to cooperate, we're asking you to make initial comments with respect to your understanding of the commissioner's request. The commissioner's request is to direct staff to do a survey of 54th Place. That has been seconded. If you don't have any further questions regarding the clarity of the motion, I'm going to open it up to the public. So, who wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, you will be first. There's a button there that says "speak." If you could press that, you'll have three minutes. Please state your name.
I have a request that we have a little bit more time to just speak.
Sir, you're going to have three minutes and please state your name and address for the record.
Tim Wilder.
You have to press the button. There, it's on now. It's on now, go ahead.
It was on. Okay. Tim Wilder, Durango Estates.
Yes.
I find it funny here tonight that on the first petition, you guys were in a hurry to rush that through, waiving... Well, state law, it's supposed to be every 500 feet, not 250. So, you went ahead and did that. Being told that the commission was made aware that some of the signatures on the original request for the speed humps, some of them weren't correct. Now, we've looked and on at least one of them, the signatures that we saw certainly wasn't even close. That's just one issue. Now, we've already done the study. Now, why is it that you want to do another study and waste more time? You've already wasted $25,000 of something that nobody wanted. In defense of the commission here, Mayor, you had asked Mr. Reyes if he wanted to hold off until the residents knew about the comment or the opinion of the fire chief and the traffic study. You asked him, I believe, at least once or possibly even up to three times. And I think Ms. Rodriguez backed you on that. He said it wasn't required. You said that's correct, but however, do you still want to wait on this? He said we need our speed bumps here and that he had not want to inform the residents that signed the original petition about the health, safety and welfare of this. This needs to end here tonight. The speed bumps need to go. The petition has been done legally. We have correct signatures. And I believe over half of the signatures, the people that signed prior, have signed this one. Now, in that event, and combining some of the signatures that may not be correct, that petition would have never passed 51% in the first place. But you guys jumped the gun. I understand we were in a hurry to do a good deed, but now it's turned into a monster. Now, at the end of the day, we've done our due diligence. We're following the law. So, Charlie, if you just want to waive that and here we are, we've wasted our time to do the right thing to correct a problem that you guys should have never even let go in the first place and want to continue to go ask the residents? The residents have spoke on 54th Place in that petition. They want them gone. You've attended the meetings at Mr. Bergeron's office. The consensus is nobody wants them. They don't want the signs that make us look like some type of a construction zone down in Hialeah. down in Hialeah. We live in a rural area. We did not want this. Mr. Reyes took it upon himself to come and present this thing to you folks with not all the proper information. So I would hope tonight that we could put this to rest. Look, and I'm under the understanding, we spent twenty-five thousand dollars, but are, what's it gonna cost to remove them? Is it additional five thousand? Is that what I'm being told?
Thank you very much for your comments. So.
Is it additional five thousand dollars to get them removed?
I don't know the answer to that. We will, we will, we will get.
Well, I have a loader. We can take them out.
Okay.
And it won't cost the city five thousand dollars.
Thank you very much. Uh, um, the, uh, uh, the petition was presented to the city of Pembroke Pines. It was certified by the engineer and it was properly voted on here with respect to the ordinance that the city has. You are entitled to question the veracity of the petition, but as it was presented to the city commission, it had already been verified as it must be verified before it comes to us by the city engineer's office.
We need.
And it was.
Point of order, Mayor. This is important.
Right ahead.
The fire chief did not sign off the application.
Okay.
The engineer did, and therefore, and therefore, the approval was, was a defect.
Okay. The, I, there's no provision for a fire chief sign off. They, there is a committee that meets, and the city engineer presented the, um, uh, the petition. We have, um, um, speed humps throughout the city of Pembroke Pines, including many in your district, and, um, every single speed hump slows down, um, um.
But we don't want them. We don't want them.
Excuse me, sir. Your time is up.
Yeah, please.
Uh, uh, the, 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 uh, uh, the whole purpose of the ordinance was to make sure that everyone understood it. It was followed by the number. Who wants to speak next? Yes, sir. Your name and your address for the record.
Thank you. I live at two oh one twenty-six, uh, Southwest fifty-four. I'm like the second house.
Your name?
Eduardo Canales. I'm a City of Miami employee. Uh, in regard to what he said, uh, the authority in having jurisdiction, which is the fire marshal, needs to approve that document, and it wasn't, uh, for what I had, it wasn't submitted to him. So not the engineer, but the authority in having jurisdiction after NFPA, uh, NFPA one, which is the firefighters', uh, uh, main book. And, uh, I'm having lack of, uh, privacy because now when people, when vehicles are slowed down, uh, they, like, looking at my house constantly. I have, like, two of those as speed bumps. My, my lot is two hundred and twenty feet. So they're, like, right there. And, um, also, uh, the fact that, uh, if we ever need, uh, an emergency, if we have an emergency, the delay, thirty seconds, a minute, a minute and a half, is more than enough to save someone. So if the authority having jurisdiction didn't sign that, I would like them removed.
Okay.
Please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna repeat it again. The, uh, the, it is the job of the city engineer to follow the ordinance and to place the, uh, the item before us in a proper manner. He was asked at the, at, at the podium, is this, is this, uh, uh, request in order? And he said that he did. And we voted on it on that basis. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? You, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, City Manager Dodge. I live on one hundred and ninety-ninth street.
Your name, please.
Rafael Gonzalez.
Welcome, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Uh, and the plan is also to install additional bumps along the entire length of one hundred and ninety-ninth street. And, uh, although there's also already a burden, as, uh, my neighbors have mentioned about the extra time it will take emergency vehicles to reach us, uh, if they add the entire length of one hundred and ninety-ninth with additional bumps at a shorter distance than, than is mandated by the, the state law, and, you know, as they've said, that they waived that, uh, it, it would be more than a minute and a half. It would be more than two minutes even. So if you have, if you're having a heart attack and you, and you call and they send, we're fortunate enough to have a fire department right around the corner.
Mm-hmm.
But at this point, adding all of those extra bumps along one hundred and ninety-ninth with, which is not mentioned anywhere on this, um, you know, that, that's, that's the plan. They went in and they put in the yellow signs all along the length of one hundred and ninety-ninth as well because the plan is next to install them there, uh, in between the humps that are already there. The humps we have now are about three times the height of the humps that are out here that are protecting this building. Uh, if you drive down one hundred and ninety-ninth, they're, they're very large bumps already, and they do significantly slow traffic. I have one right in front of my house, and people do slow down consistently right there. And, uh, the whole problem could be solved just with a few extra, you know, traffic tickets. Uh, and, and, uh, there has been some extra police presence out there, and there really hasn't been as much speeding since then. So it really could be solved without, without spending more money, and especially without installing a whole nother set of bumps uh, be- between the humps. It's sill- silly terminology, but ultimately, these, these black plastic things, you really have to slow down a hec- a heck of a lot more for them versus these asphalt humps that we already have. And then the previous issue, which is that the, the, this person, Mr. Reyes, that came in here very disingenuously suggested that everyone wasn't, wasn't agreement.
Let's just.
Well, that's it. I'll say it at the last minute.
Just use his name.
Okay, well, it would be great that, that one hundred and ninety-ninth was also surveyed if, since the plan is also to add additional plastic bumps or humps or whatever they're being called there. And you really do have to slow down significantly. I would invite all of you to drive along that road and then make the left turn right at Mr. Wilder's house and see how much more you have to slow down for those additional black, uh, plastic bumps.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Can we get clarification on that? I, under my understanding, we're not adding any more bumps on one ninety-nine or?
If, uh, if I may, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Years ago, there was a request from residents who lived on one ninety-ninth to have speed humps there.
Right.
Unfortunately, well, some residents took down the signage. But those humps did follow the requirements of our resolution regarding the distance between them. Uh, so there is no plan with this motion to survey the people on one ninety-ninth or to add humps. So one ninety-ninth isn't affected. We're only talking about fifty-fourth place. And if I may, Mayor, the, I can tell you, the fire department has, on any hump, has never really been in favor of them. But that's just the case. But when residents say that there's a safety hazard, they have gone along with it. The, the humps on fifty-fourth are a little bit more excessive than any place else. But we'll do that survey and we'll bring a report back to the commission.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Farkas?
Hello? Okay. Kenneth Farkas, fifty-three thirty-one, Southwest one hundred and ninety-ninth Avenue. First of all, thank you Commissioner Rodriguez for giving me your time last week to discuss this issue along with the incinerator. With regards to fifty-fourth place, are we really gonna continue to make our neighborhood your, uh, breeding ground for precedent? You know, breaking precedent? Because there is not another place in Pembroke Pines or Broward County where you have this many speed bumps in this shortened area. So once again, you're doing something in our neighborhood that's never been done before and making us your guinea pigs. Before you vote on this, I would ask the engineer to tell you any other place in your city or in Broward County where this exists. You have seven or eight speed bumps in less than a half a mile. And the reason this is important is two things. Number one, it was that big an issue, you have an easement on all of these properties. Put in sidewalks. I mean, put your money where your mouth is. Put in sidewalks if you're worried about your residents. Put in those sidewalks, and that way they can walk their dogs, because I'll tell you this much, no children live on fifty-fourth place. What you're doing is you're depositing these cars on one hundred and ninety-ninth Avenue where they're now going down to Sterling at a much faster rate because you delayed them on a fifty-fourth place. And there are several children that live on one ninety-ninth. So you're putting in jeopardy the very people you're trying to protect. Additionally, when it comes to this, uh, additional speed bumps on, uh, a fifty-fourth place, the height of them makes it impossible for any low vehicle to sit there and to get over them, meaning that anybody with a, a vehicle that's not an SUV or a high vehicle has to go down to Sterling in the first place. So you basically negated a street that was made to give access to Griffin Road because a resident on one ninety-nine died pushing them out to Sterling Road the way you're now doing it. Uh, additionally, you've already had people out there. You have police officers out there all the time. I speak to them every time they're out there, and you know what they say? This was all started because of a perceived traffic that the school was gonna bring in, and every day, because I have to take my daughter to Cypress Bay, and I come back, I talk to the officers, seven cars, eight cars, nobody's speeding. So the traffic thing you're trying to protect has never occurred, and you're creating an issue for the people that live there that you won't create for any other neighborhood after you've already subjected us to enough BS by illegally putting in a gate that nobody else would have ever permitted, written by our s- city attorney. And so, come on, stop ruining our neighborhood. If you wanna have the speed bumps, put them at a normal area where you'd want them in your neighborhood or any other neighborhood. But don't allow our place to be the place where you test theories. Ask the engineer to tell you any place else where this exists in the city, and if it doesn't, don't, don't do it to us. Thank you.
I, I just wanna remind, I just wanna remind everyone, including you, and, uh, not one speed hump there was our idea.
What's that?
Not one speed hump in that community was ever our idea. Every single speed hump that, that is there resulted from a resident petition. This, this ser- this survey that we have, uh, uh, this petition process that we have goes back twenty-five, thirty years? Maybe longer? It predates, it predates me, and I've been here twenty years.
Yes.
So, so.
That's a lot of.
That, that process has been in place for a very, very long time, and not one speed hump would be there if residents hadn't asked for it. So this isn't, this isn't the city of Pembroke Pines, uh, you know, wishing to have speed humps in the commu- this, every single speed hump that you see in that community, wherever it is, was, resulted from a resident petition request.
But you're bending the rules to let them be closer together than they are in any place else?
No, sir. We're not bending any rules. We're following the rules.
You're, you're not la- what is the proper placement between speed humps in the city of Pembroke Pines?
That, that is for the city engineer to determine.
Well, I will tell you that you, you are below that amount in this street, and there is, as I said, there is no other place in Pembroke Pines where this exists. And if it doesn't exist any other place, it shouldn't exist on that street. Agree?
I appreciate your comment. If you wish to speak to the city engineer about your concerns about the placement or the distance.
No, but I'm asking you as, as the mayor, if this doesn't exist any other place in Pembroke Pines, should it exist in our neighborhood?
There are many private communities that have, that have, uh, speed humps.
There's not another community, public or private, that has speed bumps at this interval anywhere else in Pembroke Pines.
Look, I'm not gonna debate this with you.
I'm not, okay.
I'm explaining to, I'm explaining to you that even if I had the answer to that, it wouldn't be relevant. We sat in judgment of a petition from residents asking for this.
And you waived the traditional amount of spacing?
We followed the, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We fo- we followed the, uh, the, uh, the ordinance to the letter. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, ma'am. The ordinance was followed to the letter.
You just shut it off.
You have to press it again. I'm sorry. Your name and your address for the record, please.
Debbie Wilder, Southwest one ninety-ninth Avenue.
Welcome.
Thank you. First, I wanna say, why is our petition any different from the petition that was presented then? There's seven signatures, six or seven signatures on this one that were on the previous of residents that were unaware of the EMS response time delay. So why is it okay for them to bring that and it go through with no problem, but if we bring it, it's not?
Let me.
We have the traffic study.
Can I, can I explain?
And we have the fire chief's letter, which, no, let me just finish.
Oh, go right ahead. I thought you were asking a question.
Because you're gonna take my time and I wanna.
No, 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 no. I'll, I'll stop, I'll stop the clock. I just wanted to answer your question, if you'd like me to.
Go ahead.
So, so commissioners, commissioners, um, motion is to start from scratch and send out a new, because we have competing, um, we have competing propo- of, of petitions here.
I, I under- I understand.
We have competing petitions here. So, so her motion is to direct the city manager to do a survey that would settle that concern on fifty-fourth place. And I don't know what the answer to that is gonna be. I, I really just don't know.
But the answer is in this petition.
Yes, that's an unanswer. We have another answer on another petition.
With, but this is with the traffic study.
Okay.
From Captain Finer.
Okay.
And this is with the letter from the chief.
Right.
That the residents are now aware of.
Which chief?
The fire chief.
Okay, fire chief. Go ahead.
Now, in that meeting, when you authorized the speed humps to be installed, I know Commissioner Rodriguez said as a temporary. Commissioner Good was questioning, let's do a speed study first. And Commissioner Schwartz was against it, but we went ahead and put them in anyway. Why didn't we do that then? Now we wanna go do a study now that we've already spent twenty-five thousand dollars to put them in. And we have one vehicle that my son has to go out to Sterling Road to go out US twenty-seven because it doesn't clear the speed bumps, and it is the regular ride height. So, and he's not the only one that's dragged their spoilers and stuff on the speed humps. So now it's a safety concern.
So he can't go down seventy, one seventy-second?
He can't go down Southwest fifty-fourth place.
He can't, he, he, he can't use any roads that have a speed hump?
He can use one ninety-ninth and go out to Sterling to go out to twenty-seven to come back in Griffin, but he can't take Southwest fifty-fourth place because it drags a spoiler of the car. The new humps do. The old humps don't.
But his spoiler doesn't drag on any other speed hump?
No.
Oh, okay.
Only the new ones.
Okay.
So he can't go that way. So now that's more time for him to go around and more hazard for him to go around.
Okay.
So my concern is why, I, I don't understand. I, I don't understand why we have to spend more time when we have the thirteen signatures of the residents on Southwest fifty-fourth place, not including ourselves.
Okay.
That's over fifty-one percent. That is the petition requirements.
Mayor, can I ask Ms. Malteur a question?
Uh, hold on a second. Let, 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 let her, let her finish. She's still got thirty-one seconds.
That pretty much says everything. Uh, every resident we spoke to was concerned about the response time. And that's not to mention, I understand it's only the residents on fifty-fourth, but the others in the back section, EMS still has to go through fifty-fourth to get to them in the trails.
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz, you got a question?
I do. Um, again, I'm looking at April third, I'm looking at tonight's agenda. Ms. Wilder, the petition, uh, that was, um, that was not on the April third meeting, it was not part of the packet, hence the reason why I had asked the fire chief to clarify something. The, there are some folks who signed that petition to install humps. Agreed?
Yes.
Okay. Those same individuals have also signed the new petition that supersedes the old one.
Correct.
With removal. How many of those folks signed April third and signed the one that's on tonight?
I believe it was at least six.
Six. And how many total? Thirteen?
Thirteen.
So the percentage to remove far exceeds fifty-one percent.
Yes.
It's nearly eighty-five percent.
Well, no, it exceeds fifty-one percent of the residents that reside on fifty-fourth place.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Hernandez. Uh, Commissioner Rodriguez.
So I, I want you guys to understand that it, it's not because yours is any wrong or anything else. It's that we were told very similar perspectives from the original petition, that there's a safety concern, that I did my due diligence, that I went out and I got all the signatures, and blah, blah, blah. Now we're being told that unfortunately, we shouldn't have.
Please do not interfere with the discussion.
Now we're being told that unfortunately, some of the signatures weren't valid, that there was some concerns with somebody being, uh, manipulated on it, that there was, um, whether it should have been the renter of the home rather than the owner of the home. While I genuinely want to believe everybody that comes into this, uh, room, and I wanna believe every single thing that they say, I have been tainted in a sense. I can't believe every word that has been said because unfortunately, from some of the things that I've heard, you know, and not conclusionary by any means, he could have been completely right as well, and people just switched their minds. My thought in bringing data forward and understanding the whole perspective of every single, um, person on, on fifty-fourth, and then personally to understand what the rest of the community wants, I'll go door knocking, I'll do all these things. I simply want to get a bigger picture of what's going on as well as verify. Because the first time, and I'll say it, my mistake, we didn't go out and I didn't personally verify all the signatures.
But now we're being penalized because of that.
It's not, it's not you personally being penalized.
And it's more time and it's more city money, uh, doing.
I, I understand where you're coming from. However, I understand it from my perspective. If somebody already did you wrong, why are you gonna just simply, you know?
I'm gonna ask you to please be silent while the discussion is taking place.
taking place.
Now move forward, and like, fool me once, shame on me. Fool me twice. Like, I, I just want to make sure that we're doing this the best that I possibly can. And I can't ask my fellow commissioners to simply go off of vibes and for, go off of these signatures because unfortunately, if we've been lied to once, we could be lied to again. And I'm not saying that that's what's happening, but I just want to double check and make sure. And the next commission meeting is on October 16th. We'll make a decision on that based on exactly everybody's answer from that and my personal survey of the rest of the community. So I, I, I understand the frustration, but if you let us move forward on this, we can have a concrete answer. Because who's to say that, uh, a month from now, the same thirteen people just don't switch and say that they want-
Well, because it was all based on the fire chief's letter that was sent out after the fact that you voted for that to be done. And you voted on them being temporary until the residents got that response from the fire chief.
So we want to just make sure that all twenty-two homes have that, the understanding of not just what the fire said, but what the police had said on the speed study so that we are sure that everybody has all the information necessary.
I'm just saying that-
And I, and I want to believe you, but I also want to verify.
There's a legal way to do the petition within the city like he stated, with the signatures, and that's what we have.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to be heard on this matter? Yes, sir, please come forward. Will there be anyone else after him? Yes, ma'am. Will there be anyone else after AJ? AJ will be the last speaker. Please, please come forward. Your name and your address for the record, please. It's on.
I'm Harold Park, 5301 Southwest 199th Avenue.
Welcome.
And your consideration seems to be all on Fifty-Fourth. Everybody that uses these roads is inconvenienced by it. People that live on 199th have to use those roads too. I hope your survey will include all of us. I hope your survey will, um, will be an equal opportunity to say no as much as yes. It's, the newer, um, humps that have been put out there aren't just, um, a little bigger than the others, they're extreme. If you ever drive down that road, you'd see that. I think most of you haven't been there.
I have, I have.
You, you maybe have, but I think the rest of you haven't.
I also have.
You're voting on something that you haven't experienced. And like Mr. Schwartz says, there's probably a lot more people out here that don't want these bumps in the road as those that do. So please make it a fair survey.
Thank you very much. Just to, just to repeat, uh, uh, again, the survey, you've already spoken. The survey, the survey was, um, uh, done in accordance with the ordinance. The ordinance only talks about speed humps in front of houses. It's a protection for people who live on a block, um, against people who use that block who may not even live there. If, if placing speed humps on a, and, and, and the reasoning for it was if placing speed humps on a particular block was dependent on people in another block, that, that, that form of, of traffic control would be less likely to be available to people. And that has been the law of the land in Pembroke Pines for decades. So, when people come forward and of a particular block and want speed humps, they have to produce a, uh, a petition, and that's the way it's been done. There's a staff structure that has to be followed, and that's, that's the way that's done. AJ, you're next. You'll be the last speaker, and then we'll bring this in for a landing.
AJ Park, 5301 Southwest 199th Avenue, Durango. This is right out of the rules for Pembroke Pines. Speed humps shall be spaced a minimum of five hundred feet apart and at least two hundred feet away from any intersection.
Mm-hmm.
That is not what's going on, on that road. The road, the speed bumps are just one right after another, after another, after another. The one thing that I wanted to bring up was the original petitioner went around, never ever got a hold of Mr. Hurd and the, the Homeowners Association for the Trails, which is what that affects, and took his wording and brought it up to you. And we found out that at least three of the sec-, of the signatures on it are renters. They're not homeowners. They really shouldn't have any standing on something that's as important as this. This is for, for the homeowners because it immediately infects their property. And that should valid, you know, should invalidate what he was going after anyway, but you just took it and ran with it. Next thing we know, it's bumpville. And we've been picked on so many times out there. We just want to live our little country life. Right now, it looks like lollipop land. Yellow sign, yellow sign, yellow sign, yellow sign, yellow sign, yellow sign, next row, yellow sign, yellow sign, yellow sign, yellow sign, yellow sign, coming and going. We, we didn't ask for that. We don't want that. And we would like to be left alone, and we would like to have those speed bumps taken out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister City Attorney, are you familiar or do you have handy that, so, so let's say you're a renter or a homeowner. Uh, is, is there a distinguishing under our policy where if you live on the block, can you still sign the petition?
I don't have the document in front of me, and just for the record, it is a resolution. It's been the resolution for decades, as you mentioned, Mister Mayor. Uh, I don't know that it distinguishes owners or renters, as I recall.
Can you do me a favor and, and, and look into that when you, when you have an opportunity?
I will, promptly, I will.
And email the commissioner and-
I'll do it.
I don't need a whole legal memo, just if you can answer that one question about-
I'd be happy to look at that issue, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you from the public. Okay, we're back to discussion. Uh, what is your pleasure?
Uh, Mayor, if I could just, uh-
Commissioner Schwartz.
Just give my thoughts. Uh, City Attorney, um, I, I'm, I'm almost certain that is homeownership with BCPA as a cross-reference. We would, I, I can't imagine we would ever do, uh, a renter, uh, for, for any property because these petitions have to be through, you know, certified letter and that sort of thing. So I, I, I know what the, the ordinance says, but I'll let you do your job. Commissioner Rodriguez, I appreciate, um, you bringing the item, uh, to us for, um, for discussion. The, the testimony from the residents, renter signing petitions, those who are known homeowners changing their mind, is enough for me to, uh, to, to support at the appropriate time their petition to remove. Now, I don't know what else is going to be different from what the city administration is going to find between now, hurricane prep, hurricane recovery, and the meeting on the 16th.
It won't happen by the 16th.
And the same, I just said it's impossible to do that. Meanwhile, what we have is a life safety issue. We have, um, the testimony that I had asked the fire chief, uh, the night of the 3rd, led me to having a conversation with the fire marshal the next day, which led me to placing the item on the agenda to kind of have this same exact look that you're doing. I wanted to have it back in April. And it was voted down. Um, we would have, we would have resolved this. They would have, they would have had a temporary, uh, temporary, if not nothing, until this was resolved. Um, I can't support sending staff out knowing what the result is going to be. So for that, I'll be voting no on this motion.
Okay. Anyone else want to, want to, uh, speak on this matter?
Um, so this was on April the 3rd?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I wasn't here. The reason why I wasn't appointed until a month later, the reason why I'm seconding the motion is because she's the district commissioner. And I respect the commissioner of the district in what it is that she is trying to accomplish. I will say just, uh, something that's twenty-five or twenty years old, whatever it was the manager said, you may want to take a look at it. I would share the frustration, ma'am, I did not catch your name, but, um, I would share your frustration. I'm a homeowner. If I have renters signing something when they don't own the property. I, I forgot which one said it, but one of you said it, and I appreciate that as well. So, what I would say is, moving forward beyond what the item is and what Commissioner Rodriguez is saying, maybe we want to take a look at this and see what the process should be moving forward. That's my only comment.
That, that's, that's a fair point.
I think I, I would kind of agree on that. I, while I appreciate the residents bringing things forward, the same thing can happen all over again. So there's, from my count, twenty-two homes on there. Thirteen, um, is a majority, but it only takes one or two houses to kind of flip on whether they want or they don't want the, um, the speed humps or any other kind of control measures. So I, I want more or less a definitive answer, and I trust our faculty and our staff to go out, um, and, and get that. Again, I'll say, it's not that I don't trust what you guys did, but I have to trust and verify.
Okay. Do you have anything on this?
Yeah, I got it.
Do you have anything on this?
No.
Tom?
The survey is going to be over in a minute.
No, it's going to be done by staff.
Uh, 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 the city manager will handle it in accordance with the city's procedures. Go ahead. Do you have anything? Okay. I, 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 the, the commissioner's spoken, we're getting ready to vote. I just want to add my two cents, if I can, if I can add it. This has been a very, very frustrating experience where we have tried incredibly hard to make the residents of Durango and the Trails happy. It started with Southwest Ranches closing off your road access to, uh, Griffin Road. And that was a very unneighborly thing to do. And that led to bad feeling, and it led to, um, it actually started by putting up a gate on Sterling, even way before that, um, before I was even elected. And that became the precedent for other things. This commission spent, I think it was four million dollars, City Manager Dodge, to buy a strip of land so that you all could have, uh, access to, uh-
Mayor, point of order. Is this a history lesson or are we on the motion?
We are on the motion. Uh, and the, um, uh, bought it all the way out to US, uh, to Griffin Road and, uh, spent a lot of money on that. Then a gate was installed that was, uh, on, I mean, I was perplexed when I heard about it, but it wasn't in my district, and I decided to, uh, let that play out. That was probably the single most irresponsible thing the city's ever done because it couldn't maintain it. And, uh, but the aspect has always been there, that we want people to be happy. And, uh, tries we might, um, that hasn't resulted. I'm hopeful that Commissioner's, uh, the commissioner's motion will bring that forward. And if any commissioner here wants to bring forward the notorious speed hump resolution, I tried it once and didn't have the votes, uh, uh, please do so. Put it on the agenda and we can, we can discuss it de novo. I think it's ripe for a new discussion, and people should understand what the history of it was and how, how it exists. But by and large, for thirty years, while imperfect, like me, it's worked. So, uh, uh, let's, uh, let's see if this, uh, if this brings, uh, us closer to a better answer.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, about parliamentary procedure. Is there a way that we could, through the commissioner's motion, have a date certain to finish the actual survey?
So, so Mister Dodge, how long do you figure it will take to, uh, to do the, uh, the survey?
Well, considering the storm, we'd try to start next week, but it would have to be a door-to-door survey, so we can talk to the people so they understand what-
You think it'll take about a month?
Uh, I don't think so, but, uh-
Sometime in November?
Between meetings, yeah, it could, because the way-
One of the meetings in November, it'll come back.
Okay. So, we, we still meet before the holidays, sir. Um, the question is, how do I do this? I'm gonna, I would like to ask the commissioner to maybe amend her motion to put a date certain that we would finish the survey.
Okay.
Uh, you could put the second meeting of November.
Second meeting of November?
Yeah, but I didn't make the motion.
Okay, would you accept that?
Yeah.
Would you second it?
Can I have the dates for November?
What's the, the second meeting in November?
The second meeting in November.
I'll, I'll tell you right now.
Mayor, would that be for all twenty-two homes?
It would be November the 20th.
It'll be November 20th.
What is the first meeting for that November?
The first meeting is November 6th.
Six.
That might be a little tight, but we could try for that.
I would prefer to do November 6th.
Okay, November 6th. Is there a second?
Yeah, I can second it.
Any discussion on, on, on November 6th?
Would that be for all twenty-two homes?
For the twenty-two homes.
So it, so, so the survey would be considered incomplete if we don't have twenty-two responses?
No. Every, every, no one's, no one's required to respond.
Well, contact-
The requirement, the requirement is to make contact and fifty-one percent under our current resolution.
Okay, Mayor, can, can we define contact by leaving literature on the door or contact having a conversation?
Mister Dodge, how, how, how do you, how do you plan to do contact?
There would be, uh, a contact by going door-to-door and meeting with the people.
That's what, that's what, that's what they're going to do.
Again, what I'm not, what I'm not hearing-
Public comment is over. Yes?
We can leave as we do when we go campaigning, leave a piece of literature and have someone call us, you know?
Right.
Call that specified.
Okay, we're clear?
Another flawed process.
Just to be, just to be clear, Mayor, the, the motion as made by the commissioner has been with a friendly amendment, includes a target date of 11/6/24 for report-
That's correct.
Okay, just for the record and for the clerk.
That's correct. Okay, all those in-
For, sorry, and, you know, you mentioned, um, another flawed object or whatever may have-
Process, yes.
Process. I, I'm trying my very best to move this forward. If we want to have a larger conversation about whether petitions like this one, um, should be going forward, whether we need to amend it to make sure that it's very explicit that it should be homeowners to have a more detailed process in the long run, I'm all for it because I, I don't want to be put in this position again.
Right.
So it, I, I'm trying my best to figure out, like, what the best scenario is, and maybe we can come out of it understanding what a, a better survey or better process might look like in the future for future reference so we don't come across these issues again.
And maybe, and maybe a commissioner will, will put that on the agenda. But once, uh, once we come up with the new rules, assuming we changed any, it'll apply from one end of the city to the other, because there can only be one set of rules.
This is what's in the-
Excuse me, excuse me, thank you. Okay? Any further discussion, commissioners? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so that's four to one, and this matter's resolved, and I want to thank you all for your participation. Thank you. Okay, going back to the regular agenda, we have, um, announcements of items to be polled.
We have already addressed the, uh, pre-presentation, so-
Okay. Are there any announcements to be polled?
No other announcements.
Okay. Presentations are done. Items have requested the public, any?
No items have been requested.
Okay. Commissioner order report?
None.
Appeals of the Board of Adjustments?
None, Mayor.
Announcement of board committee appointments?
None, Mayor.
Okay, consent agenda consists of items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. And eleven. What is your pleasure? Hearing none, can I have a motion for the consent agenda? There's a motion made by Commissioner Rodriguez, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Hernandez, any discussion? Hearing none, any from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Uh, agenda is completed. Ms. City Manager, anything from you?
No, no, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Ms. City Attorney, anything from you?
Mr. Mayor, just the item that follows, which is item number 12.
Sorry?
Just item number 12.
Item number 12?
Which is the settlement proposal on the Calix construction case.
Okay, number 12, please read.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Item number 12 is a discussion and motion to approve a settlement agreement in the case of City Pembroke Pines adverse Calix construction, Broward County Circuit Court Case Number C A C E 22 dash 011989. That's before Judge Michelle Tobin Singer, the backup of which is in the agenda report form, and requests the mayor and commission, having seen the various emails and backup on the proposal, uh, to settle the matter for the case set forth in the backup at $199,000 on the record, which is less than the jury verdict, and would eliminate any further litigation, any further costs and expense in this matter.
Okay, can I have a motion for discussion, please?
Motion to move.
Move by the vice mayor, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hernandez, any discussion? Any from the public? Clerk will call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yep.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes, and by your vote, this item is, uh, is adopted unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor Commission, for the direction and for the guidance, very much.
Okay, it, it, uh, uh, reports of the league representatives?
Uh, Mayor, the, uh, Broward League was postponed, uh, date to be determined for this week.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez, anything from you? Okay. Reports to City Manager, City Attorney, we're covered?
Yes, sir.
You know nothing? I'd like to wish everyone, uh, a pleasant, uh, next few days. I want to thank police and fire and the emergency management staff, our people in public services and others, uh, for their vigilance and for their hard work. Let's hope that we can get past this unscathed. Uh, it's going to be difficult days for Florida ahead, and, uh, um, I, I'm just very, very thankful that we, it looks like we're not going to get the brunt of this storm. But I had a, I, I had a discussion with someone the other, just, just, just the other day, and, uh, they didn't quite get what the gravitas of this is. So, right now, uh, Chief Justino says that this storm is, uh, is category five and it's heading currently, it could shift, but it's heading currently is around the area of Tampa. So, if you were to drive to Tampa from Pembroke Pines, I looked it up, it's about 257 miles, but that is a sort of, the road is something of a parenthesis. It goes through the Everglades and then it curves up. As the crow flies, we're really only about 180 or so miles away. Is that about right? Okay, this, the width, the ra, the radius of this storm is 230 miles each. So it ra, if, if this hits Tampa, the, it, it's 230 miles south and 230 miles north. That's how big this thing is. Those outer bands will be felt in the Keys. And if this thing shifts south, or if it shifts north, it, the, that, that, the impact of that radius is, uh, uh, this, and, and I said that not to scare him, but to, uh, explain, this is a very serious matter. We in the city of Pembroke Pines are prepared to do whatever we have to, come what may, to help our city recover. All we ask is that residents be, uh, um, prepared at home. Make sure that your hurricane preparedness checklist is done. Make sure that there's nothing flying around, or that can fly around in your yard. Please do not leave, uh, uh, items that can be wind-blown, bulk items or anything like that. This is not the time to be cleaning out your garage and placing a bunch of items on the perb. We've had that problem before. Please cooperate with everyone. Right now, uh, unless winds, uh, are sustained at 35 miles an hour, I'm advised that garbage service will not be discontinued tomorrow. Uh, but once winds start hitting 35 miles an hour, those garbage trucks are coming off the road, and they're going to have to pull everything back in. So let's keep the roads clear. Please don't drive if you don't need to drive. Let's hunker down and let's get through this thing safely, and God willing, uh, we'll be okay in Pembroke Pines. But come what may, you have the very, very finest, the very, very bravest and the very best-trained and, and able and devoted people here in this city hall in every discipline that we have, um, uh, to help you, uh, get by. Help your neighbor, stay safe. This meeting's adjourned.